Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we are going live. Okay, all right. Good evening and welcome to the Common Council meeting of June 24th, 2025. It is 7:34. Mayor Rilling is out of town tonight, and so I'll take care of things. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. Legjelski-Eichner. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Attorney.
Mr. Seed.
Attorney.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Edie.
Here.
Ms. Winterstrand.
Here.
Ms. Dunn. Mr. Sutton. Mr. Frere.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Ms. Legjelski-Eichner. Ms. Dunn. We have thirteen at local. We have a quorum. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes. First is a special meeting of June 4th, 2025. Ms. Shanahan, any changes, deletions, additions? Are you seeing none? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions? Okay, Ms. Ayers abstains. Ms. Shanahan, is there anyone? Ms. Young. And Ms. Young, thank you. Moving on to the regular meeting of June 10th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Ms. Ayers, thank you. Are there any changes, additions, corrections? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions, Mr. Goldstein abstains. Are there any others? And that passes. And then on to the special meeting of June 12th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Ms. Winterstrand, thank you. Any changes, additions, corrections? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, and abstentions. Two, we have two abstentions. Ms. Shanahan. Thank you. All right, moving on to public participation. Before we get started, I want to turn, turn the floor over to Chairwoman Nicole Ayers of the Community Services Committee, who would just like to make a brief statement.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, thank you for everybody that is here in the galley. We love to see this. We hope that we see it more often. Sometimes it's a little lonely up here. But I want to speak very briefly to some concerns that have arose in the last 24 hours about the senior center in Allen Road. This committee, this council, I should say, as long, along with the mayor's department, are fully committed to the services and the work that the senior center does. It cannot be duplicated on the city end, so we are forever grateful. What you will see as we peruse our agenda tonight will be that item, which is item six on the community service, will be taken off of consent. And I believe the executive director, this is, of the senior center will be here to talk about the impact that the senior center had on Norwalk and the wealth of funding. Let me be clear and say that in no time and in no way will we cut this funding. We're actually increasing it by 10%. And that might not seem like a lot, but boys, it a lot when you have not had an increase because we believe in the work that is consistently done at the senior center. And then on a personal note, I have to say, if you look at the demographics of Norwalk, yes, we are a growing city, and yes, we are a diverse city. But the seniors are, are the backbone of the city. They are the homeowners and they participate and they have poured into our city time after time and after time. And I think I could speak collectively for this body that we are fully in support of any and all things that we can do to strengthen that populace of people. So I hope I have calmed some nerves. We have read all of the emails. Thank you. First of all, thank you for sending them. I have received the phone calls. Thank you for calling. And I, I love seeing you here today, but really, I, I wanted to take the opportunity to say that there is no threat to Allen Road that we are going to fund it, fund the grant that we give every year, and this year we will be increasing it by 10%. Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Okay, so now we will begin public participation. First speaker is Vinnie Mangiacopra.
I said it wrong. Apologies.
Hi, Vinnie Mangiacopra, Eighth Thistle Road. Thank you. I'm here speaking to you tonight as president of Norwalk Youth Baseball, and I'm fortunate enough to have many of our board members' parents and a few of our young players as well, so we give these young men a big round of applause here tonight. They came off the practice field tonight with a hundred and three weather, just to be here to express their opinion. We've been up here before. We've worked with you all this year on behalf of the baseball program here in town. Many of these kids are pioneers. As you know, we've combined Little League and Cal Ripken to work together for the first time in the history of this town to create Norwalk Youth Baseball. And we have a tremendous opportunity here to pay it forward for generations to come with what we're doing with the Broad River Baseball Complex. So again, we're excited about the project as a whole. We're kind of picking, picking and choosing some different smaller battles here. But when it comes to what we're voting on tonight with the opportunity for the infield, I just want you to rec, just recognize through the process of selecting the materials for whatever it is they ultimately decide, it's incumbent on the body here to say we want the safest materials, right, that are the safest for the residents, the drinking water, so on and so forth. So it's incumbent on us to at least take it there and select the process, especially because it's going to be cross-neutral, excuse me, for the most part. So with that, again, I would just recommend going for a synthetic infield opportunity. It's going to require an amendment based upon the way that it came out of committee. The way that it's written right now, it says that it's a clay option as the alternative to what we had proposed. Again, remember, we have over 150 parents assigned a letter in support of this. I think it's going to require an amendment because I don't think a clay infield on all three brand new fields is really what this body was pursuing as an alternative. I thought the alternative was going to be a grass infield, and here it's the complete opposite. So I would just, again, make sure that that's exactly what we're looking for here. Consider an amendment that's appropriate, table it if it makes sense to. But please do consider this opportunity, the economic impact that it could have on this neighborhood and the future of baseball here in Norwalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cynthia Youssef.
Good evening. Cynthia Youssef, and I am someone who was born here in Norwalk, and I've had the, and currently reside at Rowayton Avenue. And I've become aware of this particular issue with the Broad River Park through my association with the Norwalk River Watershed Association. And one of the things about Norwalk that I really love is I've had the privilege of seeing Norwalk bloom over the many years that I've been here. Norwalk's best attributes, I feel, are its waterways and oyster beds. And I am concerned about the Broad River Park utilizing artificial turf. The plastic fields will pose an enormous environmental and public health risk since they are located in a state aquifer protection zone. I personally do not want microplastics ending up in our drinking waters or polluting our oyster beds. Please vote no for the artificial turf and consider the clay and grass alternatives for these three fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara Jennings.
Hello, my name is Kara Jennings, and I live directly across the street from the Broad River Park. I'm speaking today as a resident who will be directly and permanently affected by the city's plan to expand the park into an athletic complex with a third field. I support youth sports, and I want these guys to have a safe and well-maintained place to play. But this expansion isn't appropriate for the densely populated residential neighborhood, especially one that lacks the space and infrastructure to support a regional athletic facility. This proposal introduces major concerns for community health and quality of life. While some manufacturers claim their turf is PFOS-free, there's no long-term evidence proving these materials are truly safe, and no safe exposure levels have been established for many of the chemicals in the turf. If there is one iota of risk, which there is, why would you risk public health, especially when it's not necessary? We won't see immediate symptoms like they did in Lake Michigan. The harm may take years to emerge, and by then it will be too late. Installing turf, knowing the risks, isn't just short-sighted, it's unethical. The current parking lot can't support existing use. Cars already park on sidewalks, medians, and even on the field itself. There's only 45 to 50 spaces today. A three-field complex would require over 100. And there's nowhere to put them unless you plan on purchasing and tearing down people's homes. Our homes are just 50 to 100 feet from the field. Stadium lights, scoreboards, amplified noise, and post-game activity will be intrusive, especially in the evening. More baseball fields will mean more games, more crowds, more cars, and more disruption for the residents who live here full-time. None of the other nine fields used by the Little League are located close to homes. Most have buffers. Ours does not. This park used to be a shared neighborhood space, a place where families gather, people worked out, dog owners exercised their pets, and neighbors built community. The dog man, the neglected tennis courts, and now this proposed athletic complex have effectively stripped the space of all but one use, and it's only one use that is used seasonally. I've spoken to many of my neighbors. Most had no idea this was even happening. Why hasn't the city had any meaningful engagement with the residents who will be most effective? The families who benefit.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Oh, God. Just want to go on it to say that the people that this will benefit don't live there. We're the ones that are going to have to deal with the increased traffic noise disruption. And I think that they deserve great fields. I don't think this is the location that can support that. Thank you.
Tyler Fairburn.
Thank you, members of the council, for having this item on the agenda tonight. My name is Tyler Fairburn. I'm thirty, at 35 King Street. So I was disappointed that there was not a more robust discussion of the Broad River Field option at the committee level, so I'm going to try to touch on as much as I can in my three minutes. I, I'm here with Norwalk Youth Baseball. We have proposed a hybrid solution at the Broad River Complex for baseball, which would involve a synthetic turf infield and natural grass everywhere else. What are the benefits of that? It is preferred by Parks and Recreation, which we know from the committee meeting. It is easier for them to maintain. That department has been chronically underfunded and understaffed throughout the years. The idea that they can take care of three fields when there's already a challenge taking care of two is, it's not realistic. And I, I want to couch that by saying that, that we have the utmost respect for what Parks and Rec is doing. They are trying their best, but we've tied both hands behind their back with the budget and staffing that we've given them. It extends our season. It allows us to play earlier in the spring, and it allows us to play later in the fall. Our whole goal is to get kids outside, off of screens, moving, being physically active. It would allow us to do that. Weather resilience is an important issue. When it rains right now, the field puddles up. We can't play. We've lost countless games and practices this year. Artificial turf infield would solve that problem. Player safety on the field, it solves that problem. Anybody who's been to Broad River lately, I don't know if any of you have, it is lumpy, it is filled with weeds, it is filled with rocks. Kids take balls off of the chest, off of the face. I've seen it happen several times this season. It's better for them to have a flat, clean surface. The cost, as we learned from the information that was provided at the committee meeting, the cost to maintain a clay field annually, clay infield annually, is almost $171,000. Mr. Stowers also indicated that if we were going to do this correctly, if we were going to do these three fields, you would need to have a staff member out there full-time, a higher-level horticultural staff member. I have to imagine that that's at least $150,000 annually, which gets you to about $320,000, just to have it be decent. That's not even good. That's decent. Whereas the cost to maintain the turf field was about $66,000 for a difference of about $255,000. Also related to the cost, there was a question about the disposal. We heard from Parks and Rec that the cost to get rid of the football field at Norwalk High was about $400,000. Football, the artificial football field or soccer field is about five times as large.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Oh, James, thank you. All right. I'll try to cover as much as I can here. So now we get to the environment. There's concern about the artificial turf. Artificial turf has been a concern since the late 90s and early 2000s. This is not a new issue. This, the council, not necessarily all of you, approved a artificial field at West Rocks in 2020, a synthetic football field at, as, synthetic softball field at McMahon in 2022. And, you know, perhaps we've had a come-to-Jesus moment and decided that it's no good.
Three minutes.
We know that's not true because there's an artificial, there are three artificial surfaces going in at Norwalk High across the street from my house. So we sincerely ask you to consider an amendment, or at the very least tabling it, and if this doesn't go the way we'd like, I would certainly ask that all of the people who are committed to finding a way to make this happen, we can start that this fall. If we're going to find money to take care of these fields, there's no reason to wait. Let's do it now and stop putting these kids on subpar fields. Thank you.
Drew Todd.
Good evening, council members. Drew Todd, 19 Friendly Road. I am currently an umpire in all around Fairfield County. I've done many, many, many games at Broad River. That field's atrocious. Let's be honest. I did a game, one game, you couldn't see the ball. The grass was so thick, I couldn't even see it. We redid that field, I think, twice, like, three times in my tenure as a coach for Little League as well. We used to get yelled at by Parks and Rec because we did the field, and it actually, the real grass field looked like this. It was absolutely beautiful. Myself and Captain John Maggio dragged that field 20 times for a playoff game. Looked immaculate. We put new dirt on, looked good. Never got maintained. And like Tyler just said, it's rocky now. It's hilly. We used to tell the kids, you know, watch the lip of the grass because it's this big from the dirt. And then rainouts come, you know, it's a beautiful day out, but they can't play because there's mud, there's, there's holes, there's puddles. It's almost like Vets Park. I remember what, for one of the first times I was coaching, Mayor Rilling's first term at Vets Park, he's like, we saw puddles all over. He's like, this isn't acceptable. And Broad River right now isn't acceptable. This has been going on since my kid, my oldest son, who's 20 years old, was four years old, started playing there. It's time to turf these fields. And speaking of bringing in more people, more games, more baseball, better opportunity for our kids, it's also going to bring in a lot more revenue for this city. The tournaments they can hold here, just talk to New Canaan, talk to anywhere, talk to them up in Hartford or East Haven, North, where they have turf fields and tournaments. The money that comes into this city will be staggering. We're not going to have the arguments and the screams like we had just had for the school budget. Because we'll have more money than we know what to do with ourselves, and so will the city to make more improvements. It is time to do the right thing with this field and for our kids. It really is. Too many kids have suffered on that field. You want to talk about getting injured on a turf field? Ha, that's, that's, that's laughable. You get more injured on a field that's got holes in it, that's got rocks. We had one kid play second base first time, playing ball bounced right up on a rock, right into his face, bloody nose, but he stayed and played. Not going to happen on turf fields. Turf field is the way to go, as long as it's properly maintained. We've already shown over the last number of years in this city, I'm sorry to say, Parks and Rec, you can't maintain your grass and dirt fields. It doesn't happen, and then you yell at the parents when we try to help. So you can't have it both ways. The kids deserve a nice place to play.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Play. And it, time is now. So let's get them what they deserve once and for all. Let's stop putting it on the back burner. Let's approve this, and let's get something we're proud of. And when other teams, especially with Little League, come in to see our field in our facilities, they're proud and say, oh, look what Norwalk has. And give them that off feeling like I do, an umpire all around Fairfield County, see what everybody else has. Thank you very much.
Rick Wetzel.
Good evening, Rick Wetzel. I live on East Rocks Road, just around the corner, in Senior Center. I joined the seniors, by, by the way, I'm on the board of the senior center. But six years ago, I joined the senior center. A good friend of mine said, hey, they've got some pool tables over there. You ought to go over there and play some pool. Well, I, I still play pool there, but unfortunately, my buddy moved out of town. Because Norwalk got too expensive. And so what has happened? His house now has a young family with more kids. So if you want to keep your budget down, you want to keep seniors in Norwalk. That's it.
Thank you. Tyson Canterbury. Tyson.
Tyson Canterbury, 34 Esquire Road in Norwalk. I'd like to just start by just tell a little bit about myself. I've lived here over 50 years. I'm fifth generation. Okay, I know the ins and outs of Norwalk. I own a landscape business. I'm a high school coach. I volunteered for the Little League for 15 years, elevating him as vice president. I built both of those fields in conjunction with Ken Hughes. Both of the fields at Broad River, I redid the one over at the senior center. And recently, we redid the one over at Honey Hill. I know what it takes to take care of these fields, and we just don't have it. To be honest with you, I used to take my own guys over there and cut the grass. I would fertilize the fields when nobody's looking because you know what? It was an embarrassment to Norwalk. You come down 123, look over there, all you see is geese on the field. The firemen would sit there and laugh, you know, why do you waste your time, Tyson, you know? And it's because of these guys. It's because of the kids. We just talked about the seniors at the senior center. What about the kids? They're the future here. I'm still waiting to hear an expert get up here and talk, not the so-called environmentalists. This is dangerous, that is dangerous. We're putting turf at Norwalk High. Is that not dangerous? Drive by West Rocks. There's anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000 people out there playing. It's wonderful. It's a sense of community, and we don't have that. So don't waste my money as a taxpayer or others' money just putting clay and grass. It's not going to work. Ken O'Telia, he should be here testifying. They can't keep up with it. They just can't. I know there's this whole green initiative with the aquifer. I understand it. My shop sits in the aquifer, but we have gas stations, we have factories, we have pool companies right on the river. But I don't see the activists standing in front of there. I don't see Alexis, who's head of conservation here, testifying on how the aquifer works. Those are the people we should hear from, not people that just say, I'm president of this and president of that. St. Luke's School sits 700 feet, 1,000 feet from the Norwalk reservoir. Guess what? It's covered in turf. We don't think that the Norwalk First Taxing District would raise a stake if it's polluting the river. I have a study here. They went after the town of Wilton, the Norwalk River Shed, and said, you're polluting the, the river. Well, they took an independent company and showed not one drop of pollution, not one. That's proof.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Scientific study. I, I just think that we should be asking experts, the Connecticut Department of Health. I pulled that right offline. Turf fields are not hazardous. But sometimes I feel like I come in front of this council, and it's like the show Survivor. Who do you align with? Who are you going to survive with on this island? You know, Mr. Lopez, I wrote him four emails. He said turf is dangerous. Well, then why are we going to put it in Norwalk High? I don't get an answer. There is quite a few here that do engage, and I appreciate that.
Three minutes.
They do it from here. And that's why I'm here, because these kids, I want these kids to have a park that they're proud of. The place is a dump. It really is. And doing grass and half and half, it's not going to work. So show me proof that it's dangerous. Don't have a lady from Westport call and say, I'm not going to buy oysters. I mean, that's just hogwash. It really is. But I know that this is not going to pass, but I feel as a resident, I should speak.
Three minutes and 30 seconds.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Owen, Luke, and Mario.
Hello, my name is Owen Mangiacopra from Eighth Thistle Road. One reason I think we should have turf field is because, um, one of my friends, she, she lives at Broad River, and, uh, she has a friend also lives there. They play on the view, it's just in the grass. And it, and they've said to me multiple times, turf would help so much, and how much that means to me is like a lot.
Another reason I think we should put turf in the Broad River is because we could host so much more tournaments and get so much more money for the town.
I think Broad River should have turf fields because it, it would help us, like, it'll help the community. It will help us, like, helps the community. And, and then we can run tournaments over there. If we then have turf over there, then, then, uh, with the, the, like, when we hit the ball, the ball would stop earlier. And if, if we use the turf, maybe it can run faster and, and probably, and that would be, that would be better for the, for the hitters and that the runners runs to the bases. I'm done.
Louis Swisher.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I am with the Norwalk River Watershed Association. I'm probably who you're talking about. I'm also a resident of the Broad River Park neighborhood. I would like to just say, in response to the previous speaker, the fields that went in at St. Luke's were very contentious. And as I remember, there was, there were comments from the First Taxing District that they were quite concerned about that. This is just a push and pull, and I agree completely that what we need to hear from is scientists. So I have been talking to scientists, and I've forwarded a lot of the data that have come across to you. One, one point that just really has to be made is the claim of being PFOS-free is contingent on what that actually means. The definition of PFOS, how many chemicals are they testing for? There are 15,000. If they're testing for 40, that's not really answering the question of whether or not there's a presence. Also, we know from the AstroTurf report that Norwalk has, that the claim is, quote, "raw material agreements are specified to have no intentionally added PFOS materials." But according to scientists from Public Employees for Environmental Responsibility, that's an independent expert group on the issue of PFOS and turf fields. That does not mean a finished field is PFOS-free, as sometimes advertised. As these scientists point out, the PFOS can come from two places. It can be added as a slip agent, so it's part of the plastic grasses and, and backing. It can also come from the extruder machines. It's used for lubrication. When it comes from lubrication and machines, it is not considered intentional addition. So nonetheless, those, the presence of that PFOS is in the finished field. So nonetheless, those, the presence of that PFOS is in the finished field. I want to just refer you to a letter I forwarded from Kristin Mello. She's a chemist and a city councillor from Westbrook, Massachusetts. She became an expert on this issue when that town's drinking water was contaminated with PFOS after fields went in, like a very similar situation to what we're facing. She links to studies showing PFOS in new fields and degrading fields. She cites one in Martha's Vineyard of runoff that found twelve parts per trillion PFOS. There's so much evidence in the two documents that I sent you and I have copies here that I'll leave. Mount Sinai, we're gonna hear, someone is going to read a letter from Mount Sinai's Department of Environmental Medicine that they conducted a review of the risks and benefits of artificial playing fields and they found significant gaps in the evidence supporting the safety of these fields. So these are scientists, these are experts, and they are saying there are
Thirty seconds remaining.
Huge questions. And the place that we're talking about here, we're talking about a space for very young children to work. This is not high school kids. This is younger kids. But we're also talking about a space that is in an aquifer protection zone. There are only eighty in the state. This is a space that has a certain sandiness of the soil. The water goes right into the groundwater, into the wellfields of the First Taxing District and serves over forty-one, or forty-one thousand residents. So it's a very sensitive place. It is also near
Three minutes.
But I would just like to say in conclusion, any look at the science available outside of the claims from manufacturers suggests a strong likelihood that the presence of these fields in drinking water aquifer protection zone, which Broad River is, potentially puts our drinking water at risk and I don't think Norwalk can afford that. So thank you very much for your close consideration. I want the kids to have a great field too, but there has to be another solution. I have these reports, if anybody would.
Vic Harris.
Hello, my name is Richard Harris. I've been in the water quality business since about the last thirty or forty years. I established Harbor Watch in nineteen eighty-six. I ran that organization for twenty-one years. I got set up with a state laboratory. We had over two hundred volunteers when I left and we educated over four hundred, five hundred students, high school kids, and how water quality. I left that. I now work for an outfit called East Norwalk Blue, which is a nonprofit for Norman Bloom and the oyster business. And I monitor five harbors. I recently got into the whole PPS, PFOS business because I got a call from Louise Washer in the Norwalk River Watershed Association. She said, I'm worried about a couple of playing fields. I think they have too much PFOS and they're too close to the water. Fine. So I had to stop what I was doing, get into that business and it is quite a business. Very expensive. Tests run about three hundred and fifty dollars apiece. So we had to raise a lot of money to do an adequate baseline testing of the Broad River fields. Here's what we found. There are three things to keep in mind. One, there's an aquifer under the property. It is a good source of drinking water. We want to do our best to preserve that. That is one strike against this property. Two, we have a pipeline that comes from a property up on top of the hill, a shopping center, runs down right through where these fields are gonna be, crosses Silvermine Avenue where it'll pick up a storm drain up. Where the, when the fields are in business, they will do their drains into that storm drain. Catch basin and then it runs down to Nutmeg and into Norwalk River. We tested that. It has eight flavors of PFOS in it. It is highly polluted and it is products that are all coming down from a shopping center. So that's number two. Number three is the well, is the caloric during wellfields. I don't know if you know this, but it was a super fun site not too long ago. It was being polluted by solvents and metals coming across from businesses on Route Seven. That was straightened out at great expense and filtration, but they finally got on top of that. It was taken off the super fun list. Now it's having problems with PFOS from time to time and some of the wells are being shut down temporarily while they try to fix the problem. The state, the federal government finally said, put limits on drinking water back in March of twenty
Thirty seconds remaining.
And I just want to say that if you take all this put together, this is not a site to put a playing field. It is a site for grass or whatever you can do with it. I'm not against baseball, but I would hate to see this put in place. There are no standards for it. We've gotta draw the line somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Jess, Jen Parker.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jess Parker. I'm an East Norwalk resident at One Charles Street and I also serve on the board of the Norwalk River Watershed Association. Tonight, I want to voice my concerns about the artificial turf fields, which are supported by findings submitted by Dr. Sarah Evans, a nationally recognized environmental health expert at the Ekan School of Medicine at Mount Sinai. Dr. Evans is part of the Children's Environmental Health Center and one of only ten federally funded pediatric environmental health specialty units in the country. Her team reviewed the latest science on artificial turf and their conclusion is clear. These surfaces pose serious health and environmental risks, especially to children. Children are uniquely vulnerable to turf chemicals and heat. They breathe faster, absorb more through their skin and have developing systems that are more easily harmed. Turf contains PFAS, as we've heard tonight, also known as forever chemicals, which are linked to cancer, immune dysfunction and developmental issues. These exposures are real, not theoretical, and they're happening on fields where Norwalk's kids play. Artificial turf also comes with hidden long-term costs. Its lifespan is just eight to ten years. And when it breaks down, it's incredibly difficult to dispose of. These plastic fields and infill materials can't be easily recycled and are often dumped in landfills or incinerated, which pollutes our air, soil and water. So we're not only installing a product that's unsafe, we're committing future budgets and future city leaders to the burden of replacing it and disposing of it. There are also extreme heat risks. On sunny hot days like today, the artificial turf can reach over a hundred and sixty degrees, raising the likelihood of burns, dehydration and heat stroke. Children are especially susceptible and these heat conditions can make the fields unusable when kids need them most in the middle of summer. Turf also contributes to the urban heat island effect, making our neighborhoods hotter. And finally, the science shows that turf fields shed microplastics and toxic runoff into local soil and waterways. These materials don't just stay on the field. They travel home on shoes and clothing and into the broader environment, affecting both human and ecological health. So for all those reasons, Dr. Evans and her team of experts strongly recommend natural grass as the safest and most responsible option for playing surfaces. And I want to echo her message. As both a resident and a member of the Norwalk River Watershed Association, I voice our opposition to the installation of artificial turf fields for the sake of Norwalk's kids, our environment and our community's future. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Adam Fascholo.
Good evening and thank you for your opportunity for me to speak tonight. My name is Adam Fascholo and I've been a Norwalk resident ever since attending Wolf pit school in fourth grade. I currently serve on both boards for the Norwalk River Watershed Association and the Connecticut Ornithological Association. I'm here to express a strong opposition to installing artificial turf at the Broad River Park baseball fields and to urge the city to preserve and improve natural grass instead. Artificial turf may seem like a convenient solution, but it poses serious health, environmental and financial risks. It's my understanding that the fields are located in a state aquifer protection zone designated to protect the water, the vital groundwater used for drinking and irrigation. And if that's the case, then that alone should raise concerns about chemical leaching and runoff in the area. Artificial turf can reach higher temperatures than grass fields, creating health risks, particularly for young children. And beyond the heat, the materials used, especially the chrome rubber infill, contain PFAS and other toxic substances linked to cancer, endocrine disruption and developmental issues. Excuse me. Grass is just better for kids to play on sports because it's cooler, softer and safer to play on. It's free of toxic materials. It supports healthy ecosystems like pollinators and birds and it can be managed without harmful pesticides or fertilizers. Environmentally, turf is made of petroleum-based plastic and filled with microplastics that can wash into nearby waterways, including the Norwalk River, threatening aquatic life and all the local businesses that depend on clean water. After eight to ten years, it must be removed and sent to landfills or incinerators because there's currently no sustainable disposal option for it. Artificial turf can also carry a high price tag to install and requires costly replacements and maintenance over time. Natural grass is cooler, safer and more affordable and more environmentally responsible, especially when managed with organic practices like drought tolerant grasses, compost-based soil care and low-impact mowing. I might also add that as a youth growing up in Norwalk, that I played baseball and other sports competitively in Norwalk and I played on grass fields, as did my son. Lastly, the Center for Environmental Health has issued the following recommendations for
Thirty seconds remaining.
Exposure to PFAS from artificial turf. They say if you touch artificial turf, wash your hands thoroughly with soap and water. And if you have children, limit their playtime on turf and ensure that their hands and other body parts that come into contact with turf don't end up touching their mouths. PFAS are known as forever chemicals for a reason. So to sum up, please say no to plastic fields and yes to green space. Thank you.
Claire Schoen.
Hi, my name is Claire Schoen. I live at Seven Studio Lane in Silvermine and I'm here just for me. Just, I live near the fields and I've seen this debate going back and forth. I'm not gonna discuss the science because it's been, been talked about, but I do know that Norwalk has enough toxicity in the soil all over Norwalk. I don't know why we would consider something that the scientists don't even know whether it's a good or bad thing. So the other thing is that someone did touch upon, you know, kids are gonna miss games because of the rain on grass, but the heat, I mean, look at what's going on today. There's no way you'd want a kid playing out on a turf field today. So what's the point? To me, there's arguments obviously for and against and I'm not gonna sit up here for a long time to get into them. But the last thing I will say is to say that we should use turf because the city can't maintain the grass fields is a ridiculous statement in my mind. What we need to do then is to figure out how to maintain the grass fields, have the city do the job that they're supposed to do doing that, figure out a way to make that happen, but let's not just do this because it's the easy, cheap, new way to do it. It just doesn't make sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Chella. Yes. Good evening. For the record, my name is Diane Loricella and I live at twenty-one Little Fox Lane. I have spent many years advocating for this city to do a proper, not a study, but to hire neutral parties that are experts in the following things. Youth and environmental health effects of artificial turf versus natural turf. Sports injuries, well documented to the point where now professional sports people, both soccer players, football players and baseball players are refusing to play on turf. They don't want to play on it, especially also the soccer players in Europe. I also ask that we look at the true cost of artificial turf versus natural turf because STANTEC was asked, and I will be finding out through Freedom of Information, what they were asked to write. They didn't give you the council, you're laypeople. I would not expect you to be experts. But I will tell you this, and I say this because I have a lot of friends who have children that play, is that I do expect my city staff and the council to make it happen and the mayor's office to make it happen, to hire experts. I don't expect all the staff to be experts on toxicity, but we do have an epidemiologist and I have yet to see the health department make any effort or be asked to make an effort to get people that are neutral party experts on this matter. I played sports as a youth on grass. I care about these children who are in earnest, not sure, they don't understand about the things that adults do to possibly ruin their health for the future. That should be the main concern of you when you decide what to do about the Broad River complex. I also want to tell you that I listened to the last Recreation and Parks Committee meeting and you, the council members, were subjected to staff that left out important information. You were told they were giving you just the facts. That is not true. They left out or were not allowed to give you the information from experts. I agree with Mr. Canterbury. We rarely agree and I've never met him in person. I'm gonna shake his hand. But I don't agree with the fact that these artificial turf fields are, should be covering over all of our sports fields. I don't believe Mr. Canterbury and Mr. Todd and others
Thirty seconds remaining.
Understand the dangers long-term that would be happening and could be happening to these children who are innocent. So I wanted, I sent you my email and I sent it again today. I think immediately we should begin looking for ways to fund and help fund maintenance and staff and I'm gonna be sending around a sign-up sheet for people that may want to help form a Friends of the Norwalk Playing Fields. The time has come
Eight minutes.
For this to be handled and it is up to you. You have to do the due diligence since the mayor, in twenty fourteen, I sent him an email. He told me he would never put another artificial turf field in unless there were studies that were examined by peer-reviewed scientists and yet we still keep having them come up. So it's up to you to make a difference, protect our children and make sure they have playing fields that are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, we have Chris. Chris, please state your full name and your address.
Good evening, members. My name is Chris Shimko, by Bumblebee Lane in Norwalk. I'm calling or speaking in favor of the amendment to add turf fields infield to Broad River. I'm a lifelong resident of Norwalk. I have three boys, ages fifteen, twelve and nine, who play baseball, football and lacrosse in Norwalk. I'm pretty active in the community. I volunteer. I help assist run the Norwalk Black Football League, which has over four hundred plus kids who play on turf fields. And that's the only way we can play every week is because of the turf fields. I'm also a field operations coordinator and board member of the Norwalk Youth Baseball, which serves again over four hundred plus kids. Over the past three years, I've had countless meetings, texts with Robert Stowers, Ken Hughes, Eric Montgomery and Kim Girardi regarding the baseball fields, costs and upkeep. It's pretty much been a struggle to get these fields into decent shape over the years of neglect and underfunding. The team has done a tremendous job this year, even though they've had personal and budget constraints. Even with all these efforts, the fields still have been closed through the previous day's rainfalls or if it rains in the morning hours. This would not happen if we had the turf infields. We'd be playing after a rainfall, not sitting home, playing video games or iPads. I've heard the opposition creating tremendous conflicts for the kids. Let me emphasize this. We're only talking about adding turf to infield, which is basically adding turf infields, which would be about twenty percent of the entire site. The majority of the site would remain natural grass. This would allow the kids to play regardless of the weather and also allow the city to keep the fields open and playing at same consistent levels regardless of rainfall amounts. This obviously isn't the case with clay infields as they require daily, weekly and annual maintenance. Additional playing condition could become inconsistent and dangerous. A perfect example of this is a few weeks ago, I played softball and a guy was injured at home plate after a rainstorm because there's a hole in the clay infield. And this is consistently and across all the fields in Norwalk. As a resident for fifty-plus years, someone has played baseball, football and softball for the past forty years and coached youth teams for the past ten, something the community wants and needs. This is the best, this is the best interest to the families and the kids of Norwalk despite the others, what the others will lead you to believe. As stated earlier, the independent finding that showed there was no PFAS in the stormwater discharge coming directly from turf field in Willen and that that field was only three
Thirty seconds remaining.
This is seven hundred feet away, seven hundred feet away. Okay, in closing, over the past couple of years, I've seen thousands of apartments built that could have, could have an adverse effect on the environment, infrastructure of the city of Norwalk. Now you have a chance to build something great for the kids of Norwalk that allow them to be outdoors and playing baseball, even when Mother Nature has other plans. I implore you to take this opportunity I implore you to take this opportunity to build something spectacular for this community for now and in the future. Basically, something that surrounding towns continue to build for their kids. Not something that cannot be used
Three minutes.
Not something that can be used or maintained because of adverse weather conditions or lack of city funding. Appreciate and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Diane Cece.
Oh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good evening, uh, everyone or most of you again. Thank you. I'm Diane Cece, thirty-seven Olmstead Place. Um, I was really hopping on to speak to a couple of the ordinance items that you have, and I'll speak to those. And then if I don't run out of time, I'd like to make some comments on some other, on the topics that I heard tonight. Um, first of all, on the, and I didn't write down the numbers, I apologize, but on the ordinance committee item regarding the uh, um, vape shops and the new wording that's in there. I I just want to say again, and I believe I said this at committee, that I want to make sure that the city isn't picking up the um, any of this, the uh, work that should be done by the Department of Consumer Protection. Uh, because these shops also have to register and have licenses under those regulations. And they have to follow the regulations in terms of inspections and fines, et cetera. And I I also want to say that just in general, it's another example of where many of us residents feel that Norwalk has become the path of least resistance for any number of objectionable um, land uses, and this is another one. So I'm glad to see that the council is taking some action on it. Um, the uh, the other item had to do with the subsequent in employment um, sections in the, um, in the regulations. And um, I, I didn't have anything to say. I support item B with the changes for um, appointments to an agency from a, a member who was um, on a, on a board or served as an officer of the agency. My concern, and I brought this up to committee as well, is that I think whenever you're looking at a section of our regulations and the ordinances, you should take an opportunity then to review it in its entirety. And this one is pretty short, so I would have hoped in, in item A um, that has more to do with future employment of a city employee, that you would have taken an opportunity to um, address some language in there that I'm not sure how Corporation Council would, would view this. But um, one of the criteria it says is that um, no one can take employment within one year after having served in a capacity, um, basically for an agency where they would have participated personally and substantially during his or her service with the city, or bring business before that, I should say. And so my concern there was that I think it would have been a good opportunity to clean up and clarify the term substant-
Thirty seconds remaining.
Um, I think the term substantially is pretty subjective. I don't know if there's some legal standard for it. Um, but I think that if you do take another crack at this at some point, um, that you should consider clarifying um, exactly what that is. And then um, in my final seconds, I want to say um, kudos to, to the group to maintain the funding for the senior center. I'd like to see that be a lot more. And on the turf fields, I would say, um, there's a big difference between Norwalk High School and um, Broad River, um, just by their very location and the impact on the aquifer. Um, the businesses that are also in that area, these other speaker may not realize are very highly regulated. They're inspected, and they have means of retrofitting to um, address any kind of uh, concerns. Whereas the, with the turf, you wouldn't. And finally, I would say that for those people who are concerned that their children may not have the field to play on, I'd ask you to be concerned about
Three minutes, thirty seconds.
Your grandchildren as well, looking back to say, um, was this the best decision that the city was making? Um, it's a tough decision, I know. Thank you all for what you do. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, I see a couple more hands. Um, in the front, your hand went up first, so please uh, come up and state your name and address for the record, please. And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Betty Ball, and I've been a resident of Norwalk for over thirty years. As a founding member of Skip the Plastic
State your address, please. I'm sorry.
Uh, ten Green Beach Drive in Norwalk.
Thank you.
Um, as a founding member of Skip the Plastic Norwalk, I'm here to express my support for Rec and Parks' proposal to install natural grass and clay fields at Broad River Park, located in a state aquifer protection zone just seven hundred feet from the Norwalk River and the Dearing Calog wellfields. These wellfields are used by the First Taxing District to help supply drinking water to forty-one thousand people. I oppose the use of artificial plastic turf. If Norwalk wants to maintain its reputation as a leader in sustainability by making the city safer and healthier for all, artificial turf, which is an ecological, environmental, and human health hazard, is not the answer. Turf is plastic, and plastic is made from fossil fuels. Fossil fuels are fueling climate change, which leads to extreme weather events and more. Two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four um, are tied for the second hottest years on record. And because turf fields are made of plastic, they don't biodegrade. As the material degrades, it sheds microplastics posing serious environmental and health challenges. Microplastics are an environmental issue because storm drains in Norwalk will tell you exactly where the runoff goes. It drains to watercourses. In this case, the Norwalk River and Long Island Sound. What's more hazardous chemicals that leach out over time, such as PFAS, carcinogens, and lead, end up draining to watercourses as well. For people, microplastics pose a problem because they can be inhaled by the players on the field. These pieces of plastic can also be transported home on the players' clothing and skin, where they ultimately drain to watercourses via washing machines and showers. Plus, properties affected by possible water and soil pollution typically experience a decrease in value due to health risks, legal liabilities, and the costs and uncertainties of remediation, along with the community taking a reputational hit. Then there's the heat. On sunny days like today, plastic surfaces can reach a hundred and sixty degrees. At these temperatures, fields can't be used by anyone. While some worry that natural grass is too temperamental due to weather conditions, we venture to say fake grass is worse. Once an artificial field wears out, disposing of it is difficult. It either ends up in landfill or is incinerated, depending on how Norwalk would handle it. This represents tens of thousands of pounds of waste and great expense. Plastic is essential to the structure of artificial grass.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Luckily, this common council has a choice. Choosing real grass would be in keeping with Norwalk's commitment in reducing plastic pollution for environmental and health reasons. The city has already passed Plastic Carryout Bag and Polystyrene Ordinances, which have made a huge difference. Let's keep going. Let's reject plastic turf fields and opt for the real thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, um, other people that signed up, I, I know I have signed up on the sheet. Did you miss?
Oh, there's another sheet.
Oh, there's I was, I was, well, no, I was just first to sign up, and I know you. Yeah, um, so there, it must be another sheet somewhere.
Okay.
Oh, here. It got stuck down here. Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Uh, Nick Zerzan, One Gene Avenue. Uh, thank you guys for your time. Um, Zerzan, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you guys all. Um, utmost respect to uh, the Senior Center and Broad River Homes and the people that live close to the Broad River Field. I think uh, their opinions should probably supersede everyone else's. However, um, I have three kids that participate in youth sport in Norwalk. Um, baseball, football, lacrosse, um, and I've used grass and turf fields. And uh, like uh, Chris Shimko talked about, I've been involved with getting the fields ready before the season. I raked out the infield. I've uh, you know, gotten the fences set up. I've tried to be uh, an active parent and a participant and coach at times. And uh, there's a great rich history of the Broad River Fields. I don't know if everyone knows, but in the fifties, uh, Little League World Series was won by a group of uh, Norwalk youth baseball players. Uh, a good friend of mine, an old timer in Norwalk, Wayne Craig, always tells me the stories uh, of it. Um, and uh, and that tradition of, of sports that we can be proud of in Norwalk continues. We have a wonderful coach here tonight who's uh, brought a lot of pride to the town and some amazing players even this season. Hats off to uh, Coach Mitchell. Um, and uh, I'm here. If there's anything I love more than youth sports, uh, there's not much. But uh, one of them would be uh, fishing. So I appreciate uh, the concern about the watershed. And uh, if you don't believe me, I can show you afterwards uh, pictures of uh, countless fishing, local waters with my kids. I would like to say that if, if today shows us anything, uh, New England weather is unpredictable. And uh, we do have a lot of rain, and I've been uh, involved with countless rainouts. I was at a tournament in Newburgh, New York, and uh, drove up there and we got rained out. Turf fields definitely helped with that. Uh, I witnessed my daughter playing softball at the wonderful field at McMahon. In a rainy uh, day, I would have never thought would have been playable, but on turf, they were able to get it in. A lot of these girls uh, overcame a lot of uh, obstacles that they would have never known they would have been able to do. It's not easy to pitch in the rain, and they got the game in. They were proud. They won. It was a wonderful thing to experience. So uh, whether it's at that field, I appreciate the uh, concern about it. But other fields, uh, I hope that you guys will consider, uh, you know, put in turf in so these kids can play like other towns, you know. I know that the Turkey Bowl generates about a half a million dollars. That's one game, New Canaan versus Darien. So there's money to be made there. It's not gonna be a huge drain to taxpayers. Um, if people want to go to Mead Park, you can see a very similar uh, turf infield, grass outfield. It's a, it's a fantastic uh, um, attribute to the town, and it would be great for us to have that for these kids. You heard these guys trying to speak up for themselves. Um, I thought about bringing my three kids here tonight to speak. They love sports. They love Norwalk. They appreciate your guys' work. They appreciate the town. I didn't bring them because you heard
Thirty seconds remaining.
The disrespect online, and I've seen a lot of that around, and it's honestly, it's shameful. It's, it's really shameful, and we need to learn how to work together. Like I said, I have the ultimate respect for the Broad River Homes, the Senior Center. This wonderful woman advocated and showed the light there. I, I hear her. I'm not, you know, I might differ in opinion, but I show respect. I wish people in the community could do that a little bit more. Thanks.
Thank you. Anne Morgan. Anne Morgan.
Hello. My name is Anne Magnan, eleven Byron Street in Norwalk. I'm reading on behalf of Rachel Precious tonight, who couldn't be here. Um, dear council members, my name is Rachel Precious. I'm a Norwalk business owner and the chair of the Connecticut Chapter of the Surf Wider Foundation, a national ocean conservation nonprofit. I'm strongly opposed to the proposed artificial turf fields, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak today. I am a former Norwalk oyster farmer and now own an oyster catering business based in East Norwalk. On average, I buy three hundred to five hundred Norwalk grown oysters a week for my events. And I proudly tell my guests all about Norwalk's famous oyster industry. I share stories about the nutrient-rich, rich waters around the Norwalk Islands, the countless oyster companies that once dotted the coastline here, and the wonderful efforts on behalf of folks like yourselves to protect and preserve Norwalk's environment, both coastal and inland. As we know, all water leads to the ocean, so what we do inland impacts our coastal and marine ecosystems. I've always been impressed by Norwalk's forward-thinking nature regarding environmental policy. The sign of a strong community is one that makes decisions that create the greatest good for the greatest number. Thus, I was surprised to learn of the proposal to install artificial turf fields in general and shocked by their proposed location so close to an aquifer, the Norwalk River and a drinking water wellfield. The runoff from turf fields contain high amounts of zinc, which studies have shown is toxic to aquatic insects and earthworms, as well as oysters. In addition to being lethal, it disrupts their basic reproductive and digestive functions and impedes their development cycle. The Norwalk River runs directly into extremely valuable oyster-growing areas posing a risk to our local industry. And I find it alarming that members of our community would put the ability to play sports before the health, health and well-being of people, our environment, and the waters that support a very important part of Norwalk's economy. Voting in favor of artificial turf would be short-sighted, benefiting a small group of people um, for recreational purpose, purposes while directly, directly threatening our community at large. This is a matter of convenience versus safety, both for people and our environment. Should these fields be installed, I will reconsider where I buy my oysters. If Norwalk turns its back on our oyster farms and wild oyster populations, then I will take my business elsewhere. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to vote no on artificial turf fields. That's Rachel Precious.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else um, here in chambers who would like to speak? Okay, and is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. All right, I think we're good.
Yes.
I will close public participation. Um, please let the record show that Councilmember Heather Dunn joined the meeting at seven fifty P M. Um, and, okay, next on, item on the agenda, resignations and reprints. Uh, the reappointment of Sharon Connors, purchasing agent. We'll, we'll, we'll wait just a second.
Counsel President, please.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, we have to do the consent count.
Yes, yeah, we, we've got some business to take care of, and I just, just wanted to wait a moment, let things quieten down. Okay, so now we will move on to the reappointment of Sharon Connors, purchasing agent. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would like to move the reappointment of Sharon Connors. Uh, Sharon is a longstanding professional with the city of Norwalk. Uh, she is extremely knowledgeable, uh, especially in the area of our procurement process, which is very important because that's where we, the first line of where we can have major savings. When we go out to bid for various projects and various items. If we, if our procurement process is aligned and correct, we can get the best product at the best prices. And that's where Sharon's leadership definitely comes in. Uh, she explains the process well to all departments and uh, ensure that they follow the process as outlined. Uh, so I fully support this nomination. And also, um, as the chair of the Finance Committee, several times, um, when we go through our audit process each year, uh, we receive praise in terms of the interaction that they've had working with Sharon in the uh, purchasing department. So we welcome and value the work that she does. So I fully support uh, her uh, reappointment.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Madia.
How could I know? To echo Councilmember Burnett's comment, um, Sharon is the consummate professional. Um, but she does it with ease and grace and is very um, open and understanding and works well with just about everybody. Folks that kind of make it difficult and the folks that trust her, her judgment and her activity. And I just appreciate everything that you've done and brought to the city. You, you, you've upped the standards on our procurement process. And so we appreciate all that you've done to, as Mr. Burnett said, to make this a seamless process and to do the best that you can do for the city. So I appreciate that and I'm happy to, to know that you will be with us, hopefully. So thank you.
Uh, are there any other comments?
I'll just make a quick comment also to thank you for your service and to support your reappointment. And in my short time on the Finance Committee, I've really appreciated your input, your professionalism, your clarity. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you. I believe our CFO would like to say a few words. Jared?
Thank you so much. Uh, one of the departments that I oversee is the purchasing department. And so I work closely with Sharon, and she is a absolute pleasure to work with. Um, every, everybody has said it, the consummate professional uh, has uh, tons of experience in, in that uh, area. Um, starting with the, starting in the private sector and then making the, the transition into the public sector, which I think was great for uh, for the city, um, because she brings that, uh, that diverse experience with her. Uh, believe it or not, there are departments that um, always like to get things done quickly, and they, they wanna, and, and sometimes they may not know or, or uh, may try to, may try to do things that um, that are outside of what the, what the typical process is, not that anybody's trying to do anything, trying to do anything wrong, but trying to get things done as quick as they can for the city. And Sharon is great because she And Sharon is great because she can, she's balanced. She deals with them in a professional way. She, it's the right touch of telling them that the right way to do things, doing it in a, in a very cordial manner. And so I think the, all the department heads appreciate that. I know, I appreciate that. I don't, I never have to worry about, you know, there being any kind of any kind of bad blood or anything between Sharon and the other departments. And so I just, I hope that everybody will support Sharon's reappointment. She deserves it and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, Mr. Freyer.
Yes, thank you. I just want to just, you know, go along with everything that everybody else has said. And I think the one thing that maybe I didn't hear was the fact that she does such a great job. And then when we start to think about it, you know, think about all the the approvals we do for purchases and contracts and things like this. And we just kind of take it for granted every month in, month out. There's, you know, there's anywhere from fifteen to thirty some odd items that we're approving, you know, and this is all Sharon's stuff that she has to go through and she has to go look at three times or four times that many bidders for a job and come up with the right one. So I think it's, she does a phenomenal job being a lone ranger there and doing, you know, a great job for the city and very, very underappreciated, I think, by some of the rest of us. So I really appreciate her and look forward to working with her again in the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to add a few words if I may, just to, you know, piggyback on everyone's comments about your professionalism and attention to detail and just your complete understanding of procurement process. But what hasn't been mentioned and what amazes me is you know every regulation, you know every requirement, you know every legality and you make sure that we don't make mistakes and you do a really, really great job of that. So I really commend you and I'm really pleased to support your reappointment. Okay, I will call for the vote. And all in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Abstentions? And that carries unanimously. Thank you, Sharon. Next is Mayor's remarks. And I have we would like to remind the community to stay cool during this heat wave and that Mayor Rilling has activated Norwalk's cooling centers throughout Wednesday. The cooling centers include the Norwalk Police Department Community Room at One Monroe Street, which is open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The Norwalk Library Main Branch on Velden Avenue and the South Norwalk Library Branch at Ten Washington Street. Additionally, we recommend that people without access to air conditioning also visit non-official city cooling centers such as Friends or Family with Air Conditioning or Going to the Movies, the Sono Collection Mall, or other community spaces with air conditioning. You can visit the city's website to learn more about the cooling centers and to get extreme heat safety tips. On the Summer Concert Series, tomorrow, the city is kicking off the Summer Concert Series at Cath Pastor Beach. Every Wednesday, starting at seven PM through August thirteenth, we invite the community to enjoy free live music with an incredible lineup from Woodstock Tributes and Motown Classics to Latin Funk and Swampy Rock. This Friday, the city is also kicking off our outdoor movie series at Cath Pastor Beach. The city will be showing Despicable Me Four, starting at dusk. That's a good one. This Saturday, the city is also kicking off our monthly Sono Saturday Market from ten AM to one PM. Each, each Sono Saturday Market will take place on the last Saturday of the month through September. It will include over thirty vendors on the lawn at Fifty Washington for a relaxed time of shopping, snacks, music, and outdoor fun. This Saturday from eight AM to ten AM, the Norwalk Police Department is hosting Coffee with a Cop at Cath Pastor Beach. Officers will be along the walking path and coffee and baked goods will be provided courtesy of Stu Leonard's. And finally, the city's fireworks celebration is scheduled for Thursday, July third at Cath Pastor Beach. The rain date is Saturday, July fifth. Fireworks will begin around eight fifty-five PM. The city has also organized musical entertainment to take place before and after the fireworks show. For more details about all these upcoming events, you can visit the city's website and social media. That's it for the mayor's remarks. Now it's on to Council President. And I will turn the consent calendar over to Councilmember Anne Muster.
Thank you, Madam President. Consent calendar. Number six, reports departments, boards, and commissions. A Corporation Counsel. One, authorized to discuss insulin pricing lawsuits. Authorized Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements and other documents, including the engagement letter necessary to retain the outside counsel to represent the city in the insulin pricing lawsuits. Seven, Common Counsel Committees. A Financing Claims Committee. Number one, Claims Committee Report dated June twenty twenty-five. Number two, Narrative on Tax Collections dated June twenty twenty-five. Number three, Monthly Tax Collector's Reports dated May twenty twenty-five. Number four, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Soft Choice Corporation in the amount of ninety-five thousand, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents annually for three years not to exceed a total of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents for the Veronis Data Security Platform. Account allocation noted, cybersecurity. Number five, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Gov Connection LLC for VMware licensing and support services in the following amounts. Seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty cents for year one. Ninety-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty cents for year two. And a hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents for year three for a total not to exceed two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents over three years. Account allocation noted, cybersecurity. Number six, resolution to transfer unexpended funds to fund replacement floor at Norwalk Fire Station Number One. Be it resolved that a special capital appropriation of six hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-four dollars and eighty cents is hereby transferred from the Combined Dispatch Capital Project for the Communications Upgrade, account noted, to the City's Fire Department for the Floor Replacement Project at Station One located at ninety New Canaan Avenue. Project specifics are detailed and described in Exhibit A attached here too. A new account number will be created upon final approval of this transfer. B Ordinance. Number one, approve changes to Chapter thirty-two Code of Ethics, Section thirty-two dash eleven B. Number two, approve changes to vape shop's ordinance, Sections four, six, seven, thirteen, and the effective date. C Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs. Number one, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into an agreement for the use of Washington Street Plaza and immediate surrounding grounds by the City of Norwalk for their Sono Saturday Market to be held on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, July twenty-sixth, August thirtieth, and September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to one PM. Set up time by nine AM with teardown by one-thirty PM, approximately seventy-five people. Number two, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into an agreement for the use of Brian McMahon Field and immediate surrounding grounds by EJ's Heart for Their Walk for Elijah to be held on Saturday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to twelve PM, approximately a hundred and twenty-five people. Number three, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute all documents with Friends of the Norwalk River Valley Trail related to the maintenance of the NRVT Trail between Union Park and New Canaan Avenue. Community Services, D. Number one, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary to accept funds in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars in connection with the Connecticut Department of Children and Families JRB and Enhancement Grant to support the Norwalk Juvenile Review Board. Number two, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments to accept DCF Youth Service Bureau, YSB, grant funds to support the operations and various programs within the Youth Services Division. The funds are segregated into a base grant of approximately fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Supplemental funds, I'll try to make this more jazzy. Supplemental funds, twenty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy-eight. And enhancement funds of twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars for a total amount of ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Number three, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary with Compass Consulting and Coaching led by Chrissy Mahana, LCSW, to design, coordinate, and implement the Nonprofit Capacity Accelerator Initiative in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Account number noted. Authorized, number four, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary with Family and Children's Agency, Nine Mott Avenue, Fourth Floor, Norwalk, Connecticut, oh six eight five oh in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to provide municipal agent for the elderly services for Norwalk residents for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Account number noted. Number five, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary with Mid Fairfield Community Care Center located at one hundred East Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to support the Latinx Integrated Care, LINC, program for the period of July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Account number noted. Number seven, authorize the Mayor to extend the term of the agreement with Connecticut Institute for Communities, Inc., CIFC, located at eleven Ingalls Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut, oh six eight five four for support of the Greater Norwalk Head Start and Early Head Start Programs Services for a period of three years from July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars per year to satisfy the non-federal share requirement under DHHS Award Number oh one CH oh one oh five two seven dash oh four dash oh oh in accordance with Section sixty-four B of the Head Start Act and CFR thirteen oh three dot four. Account number noted.
Thank you. Well, you've heard the consent challenger. I will call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? And the consent calendar carries unanimously. And for item C four under Recreation of Parks, I will turn it over to Councilmember Young. Council President. C four. Authorize the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks to move forward with the completion of a baseball field design for the newly proposed Broad River Baseball Complex. It would feature a grass outfield and a clay infield for each item. Field. Can you move that? Yes. So we've had a lot of discussion here at the public hearing about that and I think we just want to bring Mr. Robert Stowers forward to give us some more detail and opportunity to hear more about this project.
Good evening. I am tired. I've been moving for two days. So bear with my voice in the hot sun. I'm here to request the passage of the recommendation that was made to the council on grass fields and clay infield. And here to answer any questions about finances. I understand that there were some questions about cost and I'm here to answer all those questions.
So Mr. Stowers, if you could just go over a little bit about what the total cost of this project is estimated to be and you've had some questions about what maintenance would look like as far as cost for the city. To be able to address a lot of the concerns we've heard from residents about, particularly players, about how do we keep a clay field in comfortable conditions based on the level of staffing that we currently have and what that would look like for the city. As much as you can. I mean, I think we're at the beginning stages of this, but these are some of those questions.
Okay. Well, what you have before you or what I sent earlier today was just a comparison, but our request is for you to pass the clay field and grass outfield. Estimated cost is nine million, eighty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. It has a fifteen percent contingency. Project costs have increased about ten point five percent since twenty twenty-one when we, when it was first brought based upon the design, our design consultants' calculations. The funding sources to fund this project is two point six million dollars from DP, DP Fund, a grant that was secured by Bob Duff. And then the design already, the design is virtually complete. It'll need a few revisions, but very small. And that was funded through our capital funding. Also, three point five million available through our twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty-five city capital budget. And then three million from the DPW drainage improvement. That, those were the funding sources for this for this project. The maintenance costs, of course, on clay fields are going to be about a hundred and seventy thousand. We've calculated about a hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for all three fields. So that's for all three fields. And those calculations were based on a series of tasks, mowing, fertilizing, aerating, irrigating, clay conditioning, dragging, bases, lining the bases, and we can prep overtime. A lot of overtime because of, of course, our leagues. So we calculated fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars per field and a hundred and seventy thousand total. That also included in construction costs. A ninety-five thousand dollar, it would be included in construction costs, a ninety-five thousand dollar cost for a maintenance shed, which would also house our clay and our equipment so we can adequately maintain the field. Ideally, for the complex of clay and grass, we would need a specialized grounds person. And we've been lacking that horticultural level of person. So that would be dedicated to this site, six days a week, approximately at a salary of eighty-two thousand plus benefits. This cost includes a maintenance estimate for clay and fields and another part-time position, twenty hours a week to assist an additional, which would be an additional thirty thousand dollars. which would be an additional thirty thousand dollars. The reason why this project has to go forward, or should go forward, is because of the timeline and the urgency. One, we have a two-point-six million dollar grant that needs to be spent. I had earlier thought it just needed to be encumbered, but no, it has to be spent. So that would be the initial money that would be expended for this project. Also, we have to go through a procurement process, which is going to take at least a couple of months to get to a point where we have selected a contractor and they're mobilizing. Without moving forward, we would lose this two-point-six million dollar grant. Also, we would lose our timeline in terms of trying to get this thing accomplished by May, where the season would open. Those are the reasons why we need to move forward on this. And you've heard over the last hour, hour and a half, the concern with Broad River Field. It is not, it is not in good condition, and a lot of our fields aren't. Years and years of neglect. It's hard to recover a field, particularly when you can't rest a field, because we don't have that many fields. So we have a lot of leagues, and ordinarily, you would have enough fields to rest a field or two every year and renovate. We recently went through a union discussion and union contract where for the first time, they're going to allow us to do some, bring in some professional people to do some field renovation. And of course, we'll have to put those dollars together. Me and Ken are still looking at that, but these fields, a lot of them need to be re-innovated, and that is by professional people that set up these kinds of fields. So so I guess, council members, I'm open to questions. Lisa.
So one of the questions that I had is, so if, you know, we know that we have to replace turf fields every eight years or so, eight to ten years, that's our useful life. So what would be the cost of replacing this field? And isn't that something we should be showing as a sort of a sinking cost? Like, if we were a private facility, we would, you know, be raising money or like putting aside money every single year to rebuild the fields in eight to ten years. So maybe some of the maintenance costs really can be, you know, we ought to have a line for the sinking cost to replace that field. We'd have to take the field out and then replace it. So with a new field in eight years costs nine million dollars, would it be six million dollars? I know that there's, you know, some drainage things and whatnot that are going into the construction of this, but what would the new field cost and what would it cost to pick up these skills?
So we're talking about the clay?
If it's artificial, because, you know, there is an argument that, you know, we should be doing it. So I just want people to understand that these maintenance costs don't really anticipate the fact that if we were to use a different type of surface, we would have to be, you know, imagining those costs and saving, you know, those funds for that place.
Yeah, actually, actually, the artificial maintenance costs are so substantially lower that you could cover any disposable, any replacement.
I'm asking what that figure is, if you could share it with us.
Well, I can only give you some examples. Because all the fields are different.
But would the new field cost eight million dollars or nine million dollars every, when we redo it?
No. The new field replacement would be about a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand four, five hundred and forty dollars is what we have estimated.
Nine million right now.
Because you're doing a whole construction. You're doing irrigation, you're doing the new grass field, and you're putting in clay. Plus, we're doing a lot of assets around the field, playgrounds, you know, tennis.
But I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
And the parking lot.
And the parking lot.
There's a lot of other things that are.
Yeah. And also a concession area. So we're doing a lot there.
All right. That's, that was an important figure.
But the actual figure is so low, it seems low, because we're used to replacing whole fields, whole synthetic fields, which are expensive. You know? But this field is only, these fields are only, if you total them all up, all three fields are only about, are less than a third of what a traditional football field would be. So that's why it seems a lot lower. And we're just talking about the infield.
Mr. Stowers, I believe Ken Hughes is on the line. He might want to say something.
Okay. Ken?
How do you do that? Do you see him? Yeah, please.
Just while we're finding Ken in virtual world. My question, in committee, we talked a lot about the different types of fields, but I want to change the conversation a little bit. In public participation, one of the residents brought stadium lights and parking and those things. And because this is a whole complex, I think we've got, we've spent a substantial amount of time in material of the field, but we haven't spent the same amount of time talking about the complex and what the complex is going to look. What barriers are we going to add so that the people who live around Broad River will not be impacted by not having three new fields? Can you speak about that, Mr. Stowers?
Yeah, because this field is, this whole complex is a complete renovation, and it takes into account where the traffic is and where the residents are. So we've placed our parking lot in a place that's more conducive for a parking lot to be, like the other parking lot. We've had a light study done, so the lights, when they come on at night, would only reflect in an area where it would not harm have that illumination. And we're only illuminating one field, not all three. So we've, we've had, again, we've had public meetings, public hearings, and this field has been proposed for now about four or five years. So we've done our work in terms of trying to not impact the community.
Thank you, Mr. Stowers. I think sometimes we lose, sometimes the small details that really matter to the people who live there. And additionally, if you could expand upon the traffic. I know normally when you're doing a study of this magnitude, you look at the traffic flows around what we're about to put in. Can you speak of how the traffic is going to be?
Well, there was a traffic study, but I am not, I don't have it with me. And I, I know that we presented that to the consultant as well for his design, and I can go in more detail offline.
At your earliest convenience, can you just email it to us? So that we can have that. So if someone is asking, we're able to speak on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stowers.
You're welcome.
Matta Chair, if I could just quickly add, somebody did bring up an issue about parking in the public portion, and this project does bring within additional twenty-seven parking spots, which will be along New Canaan Avenue. So, you know, we are aware of the parking issues, so we do feel that, you know, the additional parking along New Canaan will help along with the parking lot, which will be improved in the rear of the property. And just to quickly speak on the replacement costs, I did get an updated costs, which are current costs for a removal of an existing turf field. It ends up being seventy-three cents per square foot, and they also give you a twenty-five cent credit if you're going to recycle the crumb rubber. So you're looking at about forty-eight cents per square foot for a replacement or removal cost. And we're looking at twenty-two thousand square feet at Broad River. So that ends up being around ten thousand five hundred and sixty if we had to remove existing turf on the infills today. What is going to be in twelve years from now when we have to replace it? I'm not sure, but those are today's numbers. And I also did, just wanted to add that the entire project site is two-hundred thousand square feet, and the area that we are talking about, you know, which was once proposed a turf, would be twenty-two thousand square feet. So you're talking about eleven percent of the total project area.
Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Matta Chair. So my readiness is, as I get this authorization, is no bottom-line dollar amount that the council's being asked to approve in the authorization. Can you give us what that number is? And why is it not in the authorization?
I think we're giving you the economic impact in terms of what the cost is going to be, but I thought it was my understanding that this was already approved in terms of, you know, the concept of the, of the field, and the capital costs have been approved all along for Broad River every year.
Well, I, I, in the authorization, at least I'm accustomed to seeing the financial breakdown of that authorization, which I don't see here, which is before us.
I can, I can speak on this. Councilmember Burnett, so what we're asking for, as Robert alluded to earlier, we're at ninety-five percent design for this project. So we're looking for some guidance from this board on the direction we're going to go to finalize the design. And then, once we finalize the design, then we'll be back with our regular procurement process with a total dollar amount once we know exactly what we're going to build. So we can't give that to you right now because we don't have any direction yet on exactly what we're building.
That's why I indicated we have to go through the procurement process, and then we'll bring back the final cost and then ask you to authorize a contract that the mayor signed a contract with the contractor.
So essentially, our task tonight is basically not voting on the dollars to be spent, because that's somewhat unknown at this point. We're really focusing on the option of going with a grass outfield and a clay infield.
Yeah. You are, you are, I am requesting your approval of a field that is grass outfield and a clay infield. That's the recommendation from the committee. That's my recommendation now. And we want that approved by the committee tonight. So we can, so we can hurriedly get this through, so we can get this out to bid and follow this our timeline and spend that two-point-six million dollars.
Can I?
Please.
So because this has not gone out through the procurement process for us to receive actual dollars, is there the possibility that once that task is done and we see what those numbers are, and if they're, for whatever reason, astronomical, that you might come back and say, this really is not financially feasible to do this option? And whereby, we might have to relook at the all-turf option? Because financially, we don't know what the numbers are, but it might be a very high price tag.
Well, we do know that we have a design that is ninety-five percent. The design is based upon estimates of this cost, and this is the cost our consultant and designers came up with, and this is the cost where we would bid out.
We do have multiple.
We do have costs.
We can see multiple scenarios.
Yeah. But this is our regular process. We get an estimate from our consultants, we do a design, and that's how we go out to bid. We're not shooting in the dark here.
Other comments? Jim? Mr. Frey?
Oh, Jim. Yes, I got it, I got it. So, Mr. Stowers, thank you very much. I understand that, you know, this particular project that we're talking about now is about two and a half million dollars. That's the baseball field. The drainage is another three million, and then we have some other work that's also going on. But how much do we have in the budget for this field?
I'll have Ken answer that. He's our budget guy, as far as I'm, as far as I know.
We have six, six point five plus two point six.
Okay, so the two point six is in the budget for the field primarily. And that's going to be funded by the, by the grant that we're getting from the state, correct?
Correct.
So, so what we're really talking about here is the direction we're going to go. The next time you're going to come to us, it's probably going to be for authorization to use that account that's going to have two-point-six million in it, and then you're going to have a contractor's estimate of two points, all things being equal, two-point-six million dollars to do the field. Is that correct?
It's going to be an entire project cost, so.
Well, part of that project is DPW, too.
Correct. So it, but it's also one project.
But it's another piece. It's not all one project. It's in three projects, really.
It's one project, but it's three different accounts.
Yeah. These are, these are the sources. This, this is the sources of funding, but it's one project, and when we bring the contract, it'll be for the full price.
But it'll also be DPW that's going to be responsible for one portion of that.
But DPW is.
Well, DPW, you are, you guys are all one, you're all together, right?
We're all together. But DPW is also.
From accounting standpoint, you're all one family.
Yeah.
I hope the question that, 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 that that was being asked was that, you know, what is the cost of this thing? What are we voting on? We're not voting on, but our cost is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of that two and a half million dollars for a full field and the other three million, another three million for some of the other things. You know, we're close to ten million dollars on the whole thing. So that's what the eventual cost is going to be. It could be a lot less. If you, when you get your contracts, when you go after bid on this, it could be quite a bit less. It could be even more. We don't know.
It could be less, but we go over our consultant, who we've worked with in the past, and we have some, he has credibility, that company has credibility with the city, and we're relying on these figures.
Okay, so I think the fact of the matter is that we've got the money in the budget.
Yes.
And we now have to go out, and we've selected a route that we're going to take, and you guys are pushing that we go to the, to the clay and grass outfield.
Yes.
And that's what we're voting on tonight.
That's our request.
In the next couple of months, you'll probably come back to us and say, all right, now here's the rest of the plan, and here's where we're going to have to start paying somebody to do it.
Yes, we will be back to you with a contract and a selected contractor.
Okay. Okay. I got it. Thank you very much.
Mr. See?
Okay. Now I'm going to talk about P5s or where the parks. I think what we heard tonight, especially from the baseball teams and also people who've been involved in them, is that the fields haven't been maintained properly. And that's not a reflection of Mr. Stowers or Mr. Hughes, is that the city hasn't funded us to properly maintain the fields. And that's not just a Broad River issue, like Mr., sorry if I say your name wrong, but if you speak to the kids, they just love Tyson. But if you speak to Tyson, he's got seniors field, like he mentioned, that they aren't maintained properly. And that's the overall bigger issue. So we talk about why we want to do turf or whatever, because it's easier to maintain, but we just haven't been maintaining the fields that we have. And that's saying you build it and it come, the kids are coming, but we're not maintaining it because we haven't been funding it. So that's, that's the issue here. And I think that we need to start, I think, like Mr. Magnicopa said, if we do move forward with this, is that we need to start working on now, or how are we going to fund to properly maintain the field? And also, Miss Loychella made a good recommendation with something I think we talked about with foundations to help these, the friends, I can't remember the phrase that she said, but I think that that could be a good solution to help working on us maintaining these fields. We heard from, I think, Mr. Todd, who said that his parents, their people in the community that work to try to maintain these fields, and they weren't allowed to. So let's work on private part of their partnerships, or probably private partnerships to help maintain these fields, not just Broad River, but all over, to make sure that we have fields all over the city for the kids to play with. And I think that's the biggest thing. I heard Mr. Stowers say that in the committee meeting, that no matter what we do, we're going to have a park that we can be proud of, but we need to make sure that two, three years down the road, we have a park that we're proud of. And that's maintaining the fields, and it comes down to money. But I think we could be creative, and we have a lot of natural resources here in our community that I think we can work with, to come up with creative solutions to make sure that we maintain our fields. So just a lot of issues that the public has so eloquently stated, and I'm not going to go on, but I think that we, as a legislative body, need to really work on finding ways to really fund these fields, not just with this project, because there's many other fields that need to be maintained and upkept. And again, this is not a reflection of Mr. Stowers or Mr. Hughes or anybody in the wrecking park department. But we have to start funding it. We're coming up with ways to make sure that we take care of our properties so that we can have something that we're proud of here in Norwalk. And you shouldn't be ashamed, our kids shouldn't be ashamed that they're playing on the field that doesn't look good by some of our neighbors. So that's just something that's. by some of our neighbors. Um, so that's just something that's on us, no matter what we do. Uh, with this project, we still have other parts that we need to focus on. Um, and we need to help out the Wrexham Park Department to make sure that we take care of our fields.
Thank you, Mr. Seeta, and you know, I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, I am going to support the clay uh grass option tonight. You know, for the reasons of, uh, you know, the the uh um protected aquifer and our drinking water sources for the first taxing district, as well as the protection of our oystering industry and our waters in general. So so I do support uh this. I have a question, you know, because it I I really do believe it's incumbent upon this body to push to, you know, assure that we are properly funding uh the Recreation and Parks Department to maintain these fields. And it takes a village, you know, like you're saying, and it and it takes volunteers. And so, you know, I I I also like Ms. Laura Chell's um idea of, you know, community uh group. But a question that I have for you, Mr. Sowers, is that, you know, we've talked, it's been floating around for quite some time now about a Parks Foundation. And I know it's something you back a hundred percent, and I think, you know, we we have to, you know, we have to keep moving in that direction and looking at public private partnerships. What's been the holdup? How can we get this going yesterday?
Well, we've had some some stops and starts and it's uh people that have been interested. Um, and then they're not interested and um um currently working with Tom Livingston to find a a a consultant that actually sets up these foundations. Um, I advocated for a philanthropy study, which is usually useful inter determining what your catchment is going to be in terms of, you know, national uh uh national sponsors, a local sponsors, a regional sponsors. But we thought with the money, uh we could could uh hire someone to actually get the, with the same money, we could hire someone to actually work on the foundation on a daily basis. And so that's what we're working on now.
So there there is funding to get it started.
Um, no funding, there's funding, we we can, we can secure funding to actually get the the foundation set up. But to pay, to pay the the nonprofit to do this work for us, we're we're we are still looking for funding. I'm 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 I am uh I'm faithful that we will get it.
Tom recently calling, um, you know, I may have this this way. He said, you know, uh, you may have to go set this up for us. So as far as getting it done, we'll get it done one way or another if we have, um, so.
I like that.
He didn't say anything about funding. Set this up, so.
Yeah.
As far as the legal part of it and getting it.
Right.
Getting it done, that's something we can do. There has to be some thoughtfulness when you're creating something like this. There's all sorts of issues to consider. Again, it's the independent third party organization.
Yeah.
Um, and there's various considerations um for 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 how you should set it up.
Right.
And uh we want to be careful, the city, to, uh, standpoint of liability and other reasons why we want to keep setting it. We want to be independent. So we are, it is something that I know has been more than bantered about.
Yes.
And it is something that I anticipate will get done sooner than later.
I am glad to hear that. And now I know.
So I want to jump in the. I I I have to speak. You've been talking about a foundation for very long, since you've been here, and it's almost five years. We've had that conversation almost a year. And so we can talk about it, but we also have to move this forward. This is not a new conversation at all. You and I have been talking about this for almost a year. I presented some folks to you to be on that committee. So there have been significant conversations and we have not moved the needle in a way that makes this thing happen. And so there has to be a commitment that we are going to do that.
Right.
Or else we'll be here another year talking about.
That's right.
Um, so 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 that's what I'm going to say about that, because we can all talk about it, because we've been talking about it. And we know the importance of having a fa- a foundation. And all of you know that we've had organizations like the Friends of Ryan Park. There have been all kinds of organizations over the past ten years or so, even more. So there are people that do that sort of thing. And so we just have to, as a committee and as a council and as a city, do that. And stop with the barriers that prevent us from doing that. And if it's funding, then we need to have that funding. And stop playing a shell game with some of that funding and do what it is we need to get done. So that we can do what we need to do with our parks. Parks and Recreation has been uh underfunded for a very long time, decades. And 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 priorities shift quite a bit. And so you have places that are neglected. And so we really need to have a real honest conversation about how we move that forward. And I think, Robert, with all the experience that you bring from Seattle, um, we can do that.
Yep.
And I think we need to move forward in a meaningful way. We're we're almost at a hundred thousand residents and we don't have facilities that reflect that. And so we can banter back and forth, and what we don't want is to find ourselves here in twenty twenty-six having the same conversation.
That's right.
So that's it.
I do, I do want to caution us on the foundation. Foundations usually don't get into operating. They usually want to do capital costs. They want to, they want to do as fun things that are in parks that people can see. And they are looking for something being built so people can see it. That's why people put forth their money. Um, but every once in a while, maybe, you know, you can design an event where we will raise money at 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 a function or something for operating costs, but this, that's uh that's just from my experience.
And what about the idea of sponsorships, you know, like, you know, putting the name on, you know, for for maintenance, maybe putting the name of a local business on the maintenance shed, for example, or the um the concession stand?
Actually, we have, actually, we haven't been doing large sponsorships, but a lot of our uh existing um recreation programs today, our new ones that are popping up are being sponsored by various small businesses, so. But we look to further that.
And I wanted to ask you if you had other ideas that you wanted to share with us or encourage us to support um that could be helpful and raise the operating funds?
Well, one of the, one of the things that I, when I first came here from Seattle, um, as as large as the city it is and how and their funding is is great, we had the same uh field problems. Uh, but we were able to negotiate with the leagues to uh help us with maintenance. One year we got cut forty, forty positions across the uh maintenance uh field. And so we were able to convince the unions that we could work with the leagues to do a certain amount of maintenance um that was defined and we set up uh a maintenance uh guidelines for those, for those leagues to follow. Um, and it was very, very helpful and it worked very, very well. And today it's still going. So that's one of the things. I think sponsorships, like as you mentioned, are are big. And we have to have someone that understands how to how to do sponsorships and how to uh develop proposals for sponsorships and then how to sell them. And I I can teach that, but I can't do everything myself, but I can teach that.
Um, I I I know the conversation is necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I guess where I I turn the page is until we get a Parks Foundation, until we get sponsorship, there still are parks and the work still has to be done. And you are confined by unions and you are confined by budgets. And some of my colleagues get on these high horses and say all these things. But when the when it's time to go and and procure those funds, they get real selective amnesia. And so we need to understand that currently, until we get a foundation, the only money you are able to manage is the money that's in your line item of the budget. And so if you're not awarded or given, or your line item is not increased, you can't do all these wonderful things. What we all agree on is that these things need to be done. What I think the conversation needs to be is until we get a Parks Foundation and even with what you just spoke about, about teaching somebody to do it. So that means we have to hire somebody for you to teach, to do it, which means that costs additional money that's not already in a budget somewhere. And so I want to circle back to what we're talking about. I, not that I'm against the children having fields. As a, as a mom who has a young, a twelve-year-old who plays city sports, I know the importance of a field. But my issue is us just putting money out there and we know we can't maintain these fields today. I can't talk about tomorrow because I might not see tomorrow. But today, I know we can't maintain these fields. And I know we don't have an active plan on how we're going to maintain that field because it's associated with money. And the money is just has not yet been allocated. I think we get our hands tied, and I've said this before, not a popular statement, but I'll say it. We are not completely abreast of all of the pockets of money for the city. We get the budget, we see the budget, we see the black and white. We we don't, we don't know where we can move and we'll go. So even if you come to us and say, I need such and such and such and such, we don't know, other than taking it from another line item, where to go and get that money so that you can get what you need. So I caution people, y'all, y'all got a lot of nice soundbites up in here tonight. A lot of nice soundbites that's going to hit uh uh Nancy on the walk and all hour and maybe even the news if they have a little um news cycle. But y'all are, you you gotta do the work to get the money where the money needs to be. It can't just be a conversation to make yourself feel good and you laying your pillow and, oh, I felt great. No, 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 no. If if you're for it, stand ten toes down and fight for it every ounce of the way, not just when the lights are on. And not just when it's convenient. You fight for it every ounce of the way because you're making that commitment. And you know that you want it, regardless if we get it. So what if we don't get a Parks Foundation for another three years? We still got to cut the grass. Somebody got to cut the grass.
Well, I'm hopeful that we will. And uh we want to get to work on this. And I've been kind of uh having my um eyes out on someone that can do this foundation. And I think we can raise the money and 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 I'm confident we can raise it out of our own budget to pay this particular person. Another thing that I've done and we're raising more revenue is we've had a fee study and we've done some fee increases uh that haven't been done in in a long time. And I think, you know, our prices are in most areas are a lot lower uh than they should be. And in some cases, we weren't charging at all for the fields, particularly the fields. And we're trying to um we're trying to to coax the leagues into uh knowing that they have to pay. And uh so far, we've been able to to raise uh the fees without a lot of complaints. I mean, they came to you and all they said when we were taking fees is they just need a little longer to plan. Um, and so there's fees all through uh our park system, they need to be raised to a a comparable amount. And I know that um you know, our public out there in this, in this uh time of uh, you know, uh that not the best economy and and high prices. Um, but we we still need to um set fees at a point where this the um the city can afford it and the city can afford a higher fees. The cities, um, I think, um, her capital income average is is uh upward around ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. That that's high in this, in this, in this, in this country. So we can afford higher fees, but we also have to make the commitment, setting aside money for scholarships for those who cannot afford for it. Now, we've been doing that just out of our own budget. We've been, we've been doing that, but we've been making uh the leadership aware that we're doing it because we need to do it. We've also set up payment plans for people that cannot afford to pay youth camps uh at the time that the monies do. So we're trying to help out, you know, one area of people who can't quite afford it, but we want the people that can afford it to pay. And, you know, um, that's part of equity. That's part of equity pricing. And it it's unfortunate that our societies are so different, but that's just the reality we live in. Um, so there there's a myriad of things that we're trying to do. But around the country, parks departments and no cause of 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 city council, I think it's just priorities. I think you you get fire, you got police, and you get infrastructure and you get human services. So parks and libraries are kind of in the back looking for the money, right? So the way park systems survive are through fees and charges. Trying to get adequate about from the general fund, friends groups, since I've been here, we've set up uh formal contracts with uh fri- friends groups, the the uh friends of Norwalk Darks, uh Dog Park, Dogs, and Cranberry is will be coming next to the committee, the friends, to formalize those agreements. Then Woods Pond, uh friends of, so we can get these people out to volunteer and pull weeds and do the, do work for us that the union uh we normally don't do, the union uh workers usually don't do. So it's through fees and charges, it's through uh friends, the groups, it's it's through sponsorships, it's through marketing, it's through all these that we have to, and foundations that we have to raise the money just to stay. It's, this is not uncommon. This is we, if you go to a National Parks uh convention, then I I wish you could all go to one. You'll see that we all have the same problems. And uh but finances is uh is the is the one goal that we all have, but we know it has to be diversified.
Uh, one question, um, when will these fields be completed and when do you foresee the need for maintenance? Uh, because what I'm hearing from you is we are on a roll.
Right.
And we're getting there so that, you know, we will eventually have more funding for the field. So when do you anticipate that?
We want to be finished by May.
May.
And so our our um maintenance would go into effect uh right away. And we can do some of this, I think, through through the next budget cycle because we'll be deep, deep into there. So.
And so you'll put in a request for the next. Okay, all right. And um and one other just quick thing, would it be possible to and, you know, work it out with whatever's reasonable, but to give uh occasional updates to the Recreation and Parks Committee about where the foundation is and how that's coming along as regular.
I'll do that.
Um, Ms. Young, I think you were.
Go ahead. I think we wanted to go back, get back on track of this unless you had another question.
Uh, yes.
I saw several hands, so go ahead, Mr. Burnett.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Uh, just so I can put my head down on my pillow and sleep. Circling back to the all turf field option, I mean, turf fields have been around for many years and I gotta, I have to imagine technology has improved. Is is there any innovative option that is available to guarantee that if we put in an all turf field that we could ensure that there would be no PFAS runoff? Is is technology there yet to to provide that level of guarantee or or no?
Several companies say they are there, but whether the test, the testing is approved. But there are several companies that say they are there. But we'll, you know, we have to look to the future and and look to testing and look, look for proof of that. But uh they're moving in that direction. Yeah, certainly.
But that option is not.
It's not available in terms of black and white, uh, you know, it's not available in terms of being proven.
Neither would.
So so so, for example, if we went to a particular manufacturer of a turf field, they're saying on paper, they guarantee there's no PFAS runoff from their product.
Well, I mean, we can talk a bit about that with Greg, right? Uh, what they say is that they haven't added PFAS to it, which is different than they don't have PFAS in it because what they use is PFAS as a um slip agent so that when they put the plastic through to create the grass, you know, blades, that is used to um to create the grass blades. And so there is um residue of PFAS on the glass, grass blades, but they say that they haven't added PFAS to the product itself. To date, there are lawsuits for people for different um or uh different municipalities in the Northeast where people said that. They thought they bought PFAS free turf fields, they cut a piece, they tested it, there was PFAS. So this to get to date. I think that most people feel like the industry has not made a PFAS free, completely free field.
Mr. Quilts, thank you.
I think Greg asked the right question. I think.
I hope so.
No, I think he did. And I I think Greg asked the right question and I'm saying that I think he has the right question because I think this whole item, like this particular item, when it comes to Broad River. Comes down to. Really comes down to risk tolerance. And it and it comes down to. Basically, what I've been thinking in my head is the what if we're wrong problem? And the the issue as I see it is the abbreviation of a turf risk field, if we don't. Have an appreciable understanding of the level of risk and what happens if. Turns out there are an appreciable number of PFAS and they test the water and turns out the PFAS goes up. And and my personal view on this is I can't. Get myself to a place where I could, even with, even though we're talking about a turf infield and that was another whole turf field. Cause appreciable difference in the rise of a chemical that frankly, we don't really understand. And and there are a million articles and talk about sort of the dangerous health effects, but I I just. From a public safety standpoint, risk versus reward, I think this is relatively clear. However, I also appreciate what the student, you know, the baseball player, the students who came here and their parents and a lot of the North baseball families. Have said, and I think the council member C made the exact right point, which is that the bigger issue is about the investment in our fields. Parks are a crucial facet of quality of life for our residents. We have. Not, you know, the hardest part is city governments, you know. Our budget talks about our values, but at the same time, we have to make priorities and decisions based on. Not only the most pressing issues, but making sure that we're doing basics, keeping people safe and healthy. We're doing those two things. We're doing a lot of the right things, but I I I think that what we're really talking about at the end of the day, and I think, Mr. Sowers, I think you've kind of laid out the case for this, is advocacy. Advocacy for a more robust parks budget, it's not that we've. You know, it's not that we don't want it, it's that we've decided, you know, for. A lot of crises that have come our way, everything from COVID and beyond, there are, there are appreciable reasons why. We have not been able to invest the money in our fields that we haven't. I think we're now at a point, for all the reasons you said, that we can begin to make a more robust investment in maintaining our fields. So that when our students are playing at Broad River or these other fields and, you know. And it's even despite it being a clay infield and a grass outfield, they will have an appreciably high quality um playing experience. So I love, I take what Councilmember Ayers said um as a very appreciable point, but I believe in the politics of the possible. And I think that our just our decisions here is not. An immutable fact that a parks budget is going to be one thing as opposed to the other, it's our choice, it's what we elected to do. So I think that um one thing that I will be working towards, and I know a number of people I think on this panel feel the same, is advocating for a more forceful investment. Um in maintaining um and expanding upon um our park system and you can hold me to it. But I'm gonna be voting.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Um I forgot to call you, you're calling me. Go, thank you for saying that publicly and and not wait, thank you. I just want to say thank you for saying that publicly because what really turns my. If people go in coffees or somewhere else and say greedy old things, but when we come to this table to make a vote, then they overhear crying and saying other stuff. Contrary to what they said prior and that's not fair to any of our constituents. Anybody knows if I stand for something, I stand for something, ten toes down. And thank you for saying that you are going to advocate. To make sure that we have a robust, robust park system. Thank you very much.
Mr. Loveless.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that the hundred and seventy thousand, seventy six, that kicks off this May, well. May, right? That's it, that's that's.
Well, well, it will kick off uh but but it's in the budget.
Right.
Yeah.
Um did you by nature doing these sort of projections to see? How much the cost, maintenance costs are going to rise, given inflationary pressures, weight rates. Uh costs of equipment, whether it's three to four years, using some of the like three to five percent.
Yeah.
Um uh you know, increase.
That that's what it's usually around, uh three to five percent.
Did you take a look at the embed to kind of kind of give us that stuff?
Well, yeah, we 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 do like a a a projection ahead, uh a a two or three year projection, so. Yeah, that's what we use to come up with that, so.
Okay, so let's say for the next two, three years, are you expecting a significant increase?
No, not significant, but at least um in line with inflation or to keep out of inflation.
Okay.
And and our fees should keep up with inflation.
Right.
And and so we have to make uh just a more, we have to make a more commitment. More toward raising our fees when they need to be raised and we need to be a commitment. To take care of the people that can't afford it as well. We need to do both. One, one of the things that I know. That I understand that, you know, uh we brought this um. Uh proposal to you tonight to vote on and I know location of the field is. Um really where the river meets the road. But things have changed in sports. Things have changed in sports over the years. That's what prompted uh the. Really the invention of of these synthetic fields. And the and the thing that has changed is uh we don't have. Uh distinct seasons anymore. We used to have distinct seasons when I first came in the parks where it started on this month and ended that month. And that that's gone. These teams, baseball, football, basketball, they play year round. They may not play here, but they're playing somewhere else where they can play. Uh but these are year round sports, that's why they have the the leagues that are traveling leagues and uh select leagues. Yeah, these, these are going on uh to high school and maybe college and. And and the ones that are not going to get to that level, they're still playing year round. And so this this particular. Vote may go that, should go that way because of the location, but I think in the future, we still have. We still have a duty to try and make the best decisions about the rest of the fields. And we have fields coming up for replacement, uh and we'll put them on a cycle. And even though the average uh length of time is from eight to ten years with good. Stress uh uh steady um maintenance, they can last fifteen years. And so uh we we just need to have a direction uh when we come to the other fields. So um.
Thank you, I go ahead.
And just quickly, I'm so, I I'm I'm needed that you brought that up because I I publicly say I am. I am a fan of turf fields. I I've seen them locally, I've seen them across the country. And and uh not only the the aesthetic look of a turf field. But to your point, the usage, it is year round for multiple different sports. And to maintain uh uh it would be astronomical to try to maintain a natural. Grass field if you're using it year round. We're making this decision primarily because of the location. And and the impact of of potential PFAS in in the waterways.
Yeah.
Uh but this is not setting, unless I'm wrong, this is not setting a precedent. That we are abandoning turf fields in the city of Norwalk. I hope that's not the precedent that we're setting.
I think the concern here.
Is is specifically because of the location.
The location.
As we build new facilities and new locations. I I hope the turf field option. Is one that we strongly consider because of the usage and and the maintenance um and the savings. Uh because I I I think that that would be of most value to the city.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions, comments? All right, I will call the vote then. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Miss Ayers? Abstentions? Okay, that passes.
Can I can I can I give a thank you though to the to the council and the city? We're building a sixteen million dollar recreation center. And that which was the the primary or the first um accomplishment. Uh that we were, the first goal on our master plan, uh strategic plan. Uh the master plan that we we approved some two years ago. And the the first item on there was to complete was a recreation center. And we're very close to uh to completing that. And so I have to thank the council and the mayor and. And everyone that has been concerned with it because that this is going to be really a a great facility.
And Ms. Young has some final comment?
So I really want to say thank you to Mr. Sowers because I think when this plan was first presented, it was all turf. And you listened to what people were saying. And at least decided to come up with other options. And while I would 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 actually prefer uh turf as well, I think we came to a compromise on this. And so I appreciate you doing that. And while others might not understand and know that you did that. Just to really move this forward in the best interest of the city so that we can have. This state of the art, this this type of facility that is going to hopefully bring income. Be a generating um opportunity for for the city. So I want to thank you for that and just put that in the right. That you you saw that and you were able to shift. And and as Mr. uh Greg Burnett said. I I I'm I'm hopeful that this is not a precedent, but I think what we also need to do, and you and I have talked about this, and I think the committee, this council will agree. Is that we should try and do a study. Um and have a neutral, have neutral parties come in and give give testimony. So that we have something to move from it as we go forward, because in the next two, three to five years. We're going to find ourselves back here as we have to replace our channels and we need to have something that we can look at.
Absolutely.
And so I thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um let's move on to community services, item six, who there's.
Right, we've been here so long, our blood sugar has dropped. I counted that. Authorize um the mayor Harry W. willing to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments. Or amendment as may be necessary with the Norwalk Senior Center located at eleven Allen Road, Norwalk, Connecticut, zero six eight five one. In the amount of four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars to provide ongoing, ongoing senior services for Norwalk residents. For the period of July one, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, account noted. Um we do have some people, the executive director for the senior center is here to speak to this. I also think. Chief Daniels was joining. I don't know if he had joined yet. To speak to this. Uh while they're coming to the podium, I would just like to say that this was passed unanimously. Um in committee, as I stated in my opening remarks. We have made a longstanding commitment with the Norwalk Senior Center to fund them um to do the work. For this population. Um. Many of you may know, many of you may not know, my grandmother was here today. Because she was coming to fight on behalf of the Norwalk Senior Center. Um. And my aunts were here also. And I I want to emphasize that we are increasing it. The what we gave in previous years by ten percent. And it might not look like a lot, but it is our commitment. To the dedicated work that is done day in and day out. And I think my colleague, my something happened with my screen. Um I think my colleague Heather Dunn is still online, but she really wanted to highlight the services. Of the senior center because she felt that the work that was doing, which was being done there was so great. That she wanted this public forum to be used to highlight some of the work. So be interested if you can share at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the common council and members with attendees. My name is Beatrix Lane. I'm the executive director of the Norwalk Senior Center for the past twelve years. Our mission is empowering adults fifty five plus for personal independence, healthy aging, social connection and lifetime learning. In a nutshell, we help seniors thrive. According to the latest census, over seventeen thousand seniors aged sixty plus reside in Norwalk, Connecticut. The population of Connecticut residents aged sixty plus is projected to grow significantly in the coming years. Namely thirty percent by twenty thirty. Five thousand seniors visit the Norwalk Senior Center in any given year. The senior center is a bustling activity center, much like a college campus, where a wide array of activities. Services and resources are provided by a small dedicated staff and forty volunteers. We are a safety net for low income and poor seniors. We are a designated community focal point for aging services by the Southwestern Connecticut Agency on Aging. A few of the most vital services we provide are benefit assistance, evidence-based exercise. Fall prevention, pre-health screenings, housing assistance, information and referral. Meals, scam prevention, skill building, socialization and transportation. We are also a cooling center. Norwalk Senior Center is grateful for the support which we receive from the city of Norwalk. I recommend a forum be held at a later date to give senior participants. An opportunity to share with the council or interested council members what the senior center means to them. I sort of dissuaded them for attending today because of the heat. Uh thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Beatrice. I also see Chief Daniels online. Would you like to respond to this item, Chief Daniels?
Thank you, and I certainly will be brief, but just to give a brief, you know, first of all, of course, um we're pleased to support the four hundred thousand dollar grant. From the city of Norwalk to support the operations of the Norwalk Senior Center. Uh this represents a longstanding commitment by the city stretching back, and I think Beatrice can speak to it, more than fifty years, maybe longer. To ensure our older adults have access to vital services. Um over the past three years, uh through Mayor Williams' uh administration, we've increased. Uh the current level, so this particular grant is four hundred thousand. It was three ninety, three hundred ninety thousand last year and it's administered through uh my department. So again, thank you, thank you, Beatrice, for being there present and I'm happy to support any additional questions specifically on the department side. Uh if there's any, thank you so much, Madam Chair.
All I want to say is thank you for coming out and staying through this meeting. Hot both in subject and in temperature. So um.
My pleasure.
And 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 we really appreciate, and obviously we just, you know, you did it on such short notice and we're sorry and also we appreciate it. And uh we are, as Councilmember Ayers said, you know, and I think she speaks for all of us on this, is a. We are committed to supporting Norwalk seniors, Norwalk Senior Center, and I really like that you laid out the kind of. Things you do to help seniors because I think that was sort of the locus of the reason why Councilmember Dunn, who I don't, I don't see on here, but I think she's attending the meeting. Um wanted to highlight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Burnett.
One question, what what qualifies someone to get a a membership card to the senior center?
Your birthday? Your birthday?
What year? Oh, it says fifty five plus.
Fifty five plus.
We're in. Your birthday. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're all set.
Yep.
Okay, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, all. Have a good night. Thank you, Beatrice, again.
And we are not done. Uh I, so moving on to uh public safety and general government. Um I would like a motion to go into executive session uh for the revised kind of agreement, uh Mr. C. Uh we are in executive session at ten oh five. Okay, it is ten thirty three. We are back from executive session during which.
Okay, it is ten thirty-three. We are back from executive session during which there were no votes or no motions made. This meeting is ended. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn has been made. All in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned. Good night.